15th, 2018. We are gathered here at 114 West Buffington Avenue, Anderson, Texas. At which this time, I am calling the meeting to order. Our county judges out of town. And we will have our invocation brought to us by Pastor, help me now. I went blank.
Arlo.
Pastor Arlo. May we rise for the invocation, please?
Gracious God and Heavenly Father, we come this morning thanking you for this opportunity to assemble once again. Father, you've blessed us all of this year. As we come to the end of this year, Lord, through the holiday season, we ask for your further blessings. We ask for further blessings upon this court and upon the people that we serve here in Graham's County. And in, beyond that, into the nation. We ask, Lord, that every decision that is being made, Lord, be honoring you as well as the people that we serve. We ask that you continue to be with us and guide us and strengthen us as we go through this year. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Do the prayers to the United States of America?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Texas flag?
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance beneath Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
We're now up to public comments. While we look forward from hearing from the citizens of Graham's County, we do ask that you limit your comments to two minutes per person. Do we have any comments from the floor?
Missions, citizens of Graham's County. My name is Sandy Leipham. I am a volunteer at the Sunshine Center, which serves our senior citizens here in the county. I'm making one final announcement for our fundraiser this Friday. We are having lunch, serving lunch from 11:00 to 2:00. Seven dollars for rice and beans, sausage, cornbread, a dessert, and tea. We're having a mini garage sale, and we are selling raffle tickets if you're interested in that. We have like 14 great prizes. So I'd love to have y'all come out and support the Sunshine Center. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from the floor? Ms. Mary?
I would just like to say thank you to Al for getting better lighting at the back of the building. Now, when I leave and it's pitch black outside, it's light. I can see my car.
And when I come and it's pitch black outside, I can see light.
So thank you, Al.
Yeah, Janice too.
All right. Thank you, Al.
Leaving the courthouse, it's great. Thank you, Al.
Are there any other public comments?
Hi, I'm Rebecca Duff. I'm the election administrator for Graham's County and voter registrar. As most of y'all know, we just had an election. And I wanted to just mention that we are countywide polling places. That means our registered voters can go anywhere in the county and vote at the polling places. Our commissioners decided on this a couple of years back, and have had positive input from, and the state is listening. If we've had major complaints or a problem, the state would stop us. We would go back to voting only in our own polling places where we're registered. But so far, it's been a major positive to it. And I just want to mention, on the 2016 elections, we had 15,507 registered voters in 2016. We had a 62.97 turnout. And so with this one having 16,000, over 16,000 registered voters, we had 53 point, and they gave 83 turnout. And it was massive for us. It really was. Graham's County does go out and vote. I do have the numbers of where people turned out to vote on election day and early voting. If anybody's interested in seeing that, I'd be glad to hand that out to them. But just wanted to say, Graham's County does get out and vote, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
That list that you have contains both early voting and election day?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Is there, are there any other public comments? If not, we'll move forward with to our consent agenda items three, four, five, three, four, and five. All right. Is there any discussion on the items presented?
If not, I move that we approve consent agenda items three, four, and five. Second.
All right. We have a motion to approve consent agenda items three, four, and five. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We're moving on to item number six, presented to us by Mr. Johnny McNally, Chamber Update and Economic Development Report.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Appreciate you allowing me the time to share an update with you. Hope we can get some technology to go today. Have a good day. So, not the easiest to see, but I thought we'd help us along. Wow, we had popcorn. So I'm talking to you about the three things I usually do, which is promotion, economic development, and education. And I'll start with promotion. We've had a number of events that have occurred since I came last in August, we gave the last update. Most recently was Reds Wigs and Blues Festival. We had that in downtown Napa Sota on Saturday. Weather didn't cooperate particularly well at the beginning, but we wound up having a nice day for it. And I haven't heard final numbers, but it's probably somewhere around 130 visitors came to the city to enjoy the festivities. Reds means wine. Wigs means craft beer. Blues means blues music, live blues music. So that's what we had going throughout the downtown merchants. Positive feedback from the visitors, mainly they said it was fun, a way to learn what's in the stores. Some of them said that by the names of the stores, you can't really tell what's inside of them. And so it was really fun to go into the stores and discover all the special things that are down. Merchants enjoyed it because they had a heavy foot traffic that day, and they expect that will turn into sales as the Christmas season comes. And then the wineries and the beer, the beer merchants, they were really pleased with exposing to a new type of rules. So all in all, it was a very well-attended, I thought, well-done event. We had some compliments on the organization. We had visitors, not for this event, I'm sure, but we have visitors from Alaska and certainly from all over the region came down to enjoy the festivities. So it was a really fun time. Aside from that, recently, we've had a couple of bus tours came through. One, this one's a picture of the group that came through the law enforcement tour. That's become our most popular bus tour. But then in August, we, that was in September, October, we had one that came for Fanthorpean. And so these bus tours are starting to book more and more frequently. And then we had our business expo in September. That's something we hadn't done in a couple of years, and we're just kind of waiting for people to say, hey, let's do it again. And finally, people started saying that. So we had it, it was really good, and we'll probably want to do it every year for the next few years and just see if we can develop some momentum. We have so many new businesses that are coming to the area and new residents. And as these people are coming in, they need to get their names out to the people who live here. And the people who live here need to learn about the new businesses. So it's kind of a win-win for that. So that's kind of the highlights of the promotion that we've done over the last few months. Regarding economic development, we've had, we continue to get requests from the governor's office to see if we can respond for companies that are looking to locate possibly to this area. I did a submission on Monday for a company manufacturing facility, and I proposed a couple of different sites. This is an image of one of the sites I proposed. It's a fellow of 110 developable acres that'll be bisected by the 249 route. So I'm hoping that we have some sites that will meet their criteria, and that'll get them down here to take a look. We, whenever we can match our county with these opportunities, we do it, and we submit a proposal for that. Central East Texas Alliance, or CETA, you see the, on the right, that's the I-45 corridor, and the 10 counties that are highlighted are part of the CETA organization. It's a regional, it's a regional effort to draw development to that region. And so we're part of that group. I'm president of that, and we'll have our annual meeting tomorrow in Huntsville. So that's just another way we're trying to draw more interest into Graham's County and cooperating with the other counties to see where we can help each other. This is one of two videos that's been produced recently to showcase what we have here, and in this case, it's in the Napa Sota Industrial Park. This one was created by Entergy Texas, and I was going to run the video for you if you'd like to see it, which I think it turned out nice. Let's see. So when you click on that site, you get different information on this particular site, the supporting infrastructure that's already in place. And then they did a little video out there, and I was with them when they did it. Although I don't see where the video is here. Let me see. Refresh this.
Is that Graham's County only industrial park?
It's, they did it for, industrial parks throughout the service area.
Okay.
So wherever Entergy had a service area, they did that. So let's see here. Here's, looks like a video. And there is music, but there's not much to it. So the video starts off kind of focusing where is Graham's County. Kind of pops up within the realms, running through the area, the closest airports. And this is really the last big piece of property that's in the industrial park ready for development. There are some adjoining properties that could be developed.
So that's property that's available?
It is available, and it's being marketed. It's right next to Grand Pikeville. And like I said, it's the last large acreage piece that's in the industrial park. We have some smaller acreage pieces there, but that's the last large.
Okay.
I thought they did a good job with the video, and it cost us zero, which also I really liked.
Yes.
We have a second video that's in production right now, and it should be unveiled, probably be unveiled at the State of the City meeting, which will be coming up on January 17. In addition to this, I wanted to mention that the city of Napa Sota and I, we met with representatives from a company called, I think it's called CFE. It's an economic development resource out of Houston who could handle negotiations if we had someone come in who wanted to make a, like we've been working with that one company out of Austin. They could handle negotiations for us if we wanted them to. And so they're drafting a proposal for us to look at, and I may be coming to the Commissioners with that. It just depends on what the services cost and what kind of scope of work they're talking about.
Okay.
So I'll give you all an update on that when I know more. But I just wanted to let you know that there is something happening with that. The other part I wanted to mention is education and training. We continue to offer our monthly Chamber Academy, lunch workshops. The one in September was on networking and how to make best use of your time when you're at a networking event, how to be most effective. That was really good. The one in October, we had a studio expert come in from Texas A&amp;M. He's a former NSA cyber security guy, and his job at the NSA was to try to infiltrate the US military computer systems, try to find the weaknesses before the bad guys do. And he was really successful at that. And so now he's at A&amp;M, and we had him down here, and he was telling folks how they could minimize the risk of their own, we're all susceptible to cyber attack, and he was trying to tell you how to minimize your exposure to that. It was very interesting. The one that we're having in November is hosted by the Better Business Bureau, and that'll be on holiday scams to watch out for. So just a variety of topics. Just if you're interested, let me know, we can add you to the mailing list. But these are open to Chamber members and to the public in general. We offer those every month. In addition, we continue to work with Blinn College. It's kind of a long-term thing, but we continue to get notifications from companies here in Graham's County that they're looking to hire people, and they need a specific skillset, and where can we go to make that happen? So we're working with Blinn College to have local training for these specific needs and try to get the folks who are either unemployed or underemployed into these positions. And to get this into the high school so that the kids who don't go on to college have the skills they need to get a job right after high school.
That's good.
These companies, they pay well. I mean, we went to one last week, I went with David Yeager at Blinn College, and they were offering $19 and $20 an hour starting pay for these positions, and they just can't find people. And that's not the, they're not the only ones. I mean, I've heard from at least half a dozen companies here in Graham's County who are looking to hire, and they can't find people. So we're working with the school, we're working with the workforce commission, and we're working with Blinn College to see where we can fill these gaps. I was even contacted last week by a company in Brazos County, the Bryan College Station area, and he sent me jobs that were open for his company. He said, I'm looking to hire, can we hire people out of Graham's County? And that job, that was a job he posted paid $50,000 a year. So these are good jobs that are open, and they're just looking for people. So anyway. Y'all want me to send you the information? I guess. So anyway, the jobs are out there, and we just need to figure out a way to get our folks trained up properly to take these jobs. And Blinn has been terrific. Been a good partner with us. As far as the rest of the year, this was a scene from last year's home for the holidays parade. Thankfully, the Chamber of Commerce, all of our big events are done for the year. So now we're already looking at 2019, and we start strong with State of the City in January. And State of the City is where the Napa Sota Mayor, the Napa Sota ISD Superintendent, County Judge Joe Fowth, and we have a guest speaker as well. We'll do a half a day of session on what's going on in the state, in the State of the City and the State of the County. That's on January the 17th, and you'll be getting notifications on that. But upcoming events are the Christmas festivities, and different communities are putting on different things. I've heard that Anderson is looking to do something here on the 15th of December. I don't know if y'all have heard about that. They called it the Holiday Fest, but that's, I think, still in formation. The Napa Sota Christmas event is on December 1st this year, it's the first Saturday of December. And that's a change, every other year it's been the second Saturday, so they changed it to the first Saturday.
And you have a billboard advertiser?
Yeah, they have a billboard advertiser, which I was so impressed. So.
Is it in the evening?
It's from 11:00 AM to 8:00 PM. On the parade is at 6:00.
In the evening? Good.
But it's a full-day festivities in Napa Sota. The one in Anderson, I don't know enough detail about it to tell you. And I think that Plantersville is looking to do something this year.
Plantersville's always had a parade.
But they, I think they were looking to figure out when they were doing it. I was at the, I was at their city council on Monday. They were trying to organize that. I think that that's all I've got for y'all.
Thanks.
Unless y'all have any questions? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for updating us, Mr. McNally. And it sounds like Ms. LaFleur may be planning on having a float there. I'm not sure.
I have mine, but we will. Not going to be a float with Lucy and John's trust, but her office.
Okay. Maybe others would like to just check.
I had a picture of that, and I was going to put it in the presentation, but no, I'm not going to.
Aw, man!
I had a picture of Mr. LaFleur's, Judge LaFleur's.
Thank you, Johnny, for doing a good job and for looking out for us. We appreciate it. Now we are up to number seven, item number seven, from Ms. Lucy Pope, to consider and include the revision of the policy on holidays. See attachment number seven.
Okay, Lucy Pope, HR Director. Commissioners, before you, you have the revisions. Back in September, I came before the Commissioners Court regarding this policy on the holidays, and it was told to me we needed to do more revisions. So those revisions have been done, so it's just up to Commissioners Court if you want to approve them.
But the question, is it on the entire policy, or is it just, I received a question about part-time?
Okay. We met, the Treasurer's Office had a meeting on October the 30th with myself, Judge Fowth, Philip Cox, Jessica Herrera, and Cindy and Janice. And this is what we decided for part-times, that they should only receive four hours for holidays.
So if a person normally works six hours, then they're going to lose two hours?
Yes.
Yes.
Their supervisor can give them the option to make up those other two hours.
But if they were to work three, then they would only get three hours?
They only get three hours.
No, it would be for, for a standard.
But if they only work three, do you go on and give them an extra hour? Are we going to give them an extra?
It says up to half, up to half.
Up to half.
So they're regularly scheduled three, is that what you're saying?
Okay, so if they work six hours, they get three hours?
No. No, they get four.
It's supposed to be half a day. It's supposed to be four hours is what's allotted for them. If they normally work three hours on that day, then they should only get three hours holiday pay.
If they work, normally work six hours, why shouldn't they get six hours that day?
Because they're, we can't go through and figure out who's working what before budget.
That's exactly the reason that we had the meeting, because there's so many different factors that are involved. So we have a standard number of hours for a full day, which is eight hours for a full day, and there's a standard amount for a half a day. Part-time employees currently, they're, some of them get holidays, if it falls on, so there's just a lot of different factors involved. This will help standardize it, make it easier for the, and more fair for the Treasurer's Office to be able to account for employees that have holidays.
I'm seeing a lot of heads shaking. Okay, so the concern I received was if a person normally works six hours and they're losing, you know, would be the loss of the times that they would, they would, those two hours that they would lose. So that's a concern to a lot of department heads.
So if they only work six hours and it's a holiday, and our policy says 120 hours are 15 days, that's assumed that the holiday pay rate would be eight hours. So if they only work six hours, do we pay them for eight?
You pay them for six. So maybe I missed your point.
Well, there's also, we have some full-time that work 10 hours, and they only get paid as well.
And that's, well, and that's another issue. There are some instances where people work 10 hours and they claim 10 hours holiday. So the policy just kind of defines, or does define, what is actually a holiday. Generally speaking, in part-time employment, it's my understanding that it's not necessarily a benefit that's usually enjoyed by part-time employment, holiday pay.
Back in 2009, before that, part-time employees did not get holiday time. Then back in 2009, when Betty Shiflett was here, it was approved for part-time employees to get holiday time, but it was never defined. It just said part-time employees should get holiday time.
Does this pertain to election employees?
No.
I have a lot of part-time people.
No.
No, it does not.
Those are temporary.
Those are temporary part-time.
No, 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 wait a minute. I have a lot of seasonal, and then my office, my office gets staffed with part-time people. Sometimes I have anywhere from two to six in there. So does that?
It does not pertain to election.
They're still seasonal.
Did you want to say something, Mr. Wolf?
Well, I'm concerned about the other side of the question, where we have people that are regularly scheduled to work 10 hours, and they only get paid for eight hours, have dues two hours of vacation or whatever. They're not getting compensated for that full workday.
Did y'all take all of that into consideration?
Yes, we did. Because the holiday time, you only have 120 hours approved by Commissioners Court. If you divide that by 15 holidays, that's eight hours.
And so the option would be that they can take off an additional two hours?
Two hours.
But they have to use their vacation time?
Or they can make it up by working the two hours within that time period.
Does this affect your department very much, Chief Green?
On which stance?
On the part-time.
I mean, I have just a couple of part-time, so obviously, what the size, what will follow. On the other stance, I got eight-hour employees, and I got 12-hour employees. If I did 12 hours of holiday time for every holiday, those employees get 180 hours, and then the eight-hour employees only get 120 hours. So if we did it by that nature, why are we treating two employees differently that work 20,080 hours a year? Why is one getting 60 more hours versus the eight-hour employees? They would have actually worked more days because they work less hours per day.
Ms. Mary, so you're saying it presents a nightmare as far as turn, as what we're budgeting?
Yeah, because, you know, we don't know when they're going to be scheduled to work. And so, you know, that's why we just put a lump sum, you know, a certain number, like 120 hours for full-time, 60 hours for part-time. I realize there's some offices that work 10-hour days, deputies work 12-hour days. You're just going to have a mess trying to figure out if you don't just standardize it with a certain dollar amount. Or you can just leave it where full-time get it and take it away from part-time.
But at this particular time, if you leave it like it is versus what you're saying where before 2009, employees did not, part-time employees did not get holiday time. This way, they get at least?
Four hours.
Four hours.
If they're normally scheduled to work on that day.
Is there any other discussions from the floor here? Do I have a motion, or would you like to take stab at this, or what?
I'll make a motion. I move that we approve the revision to the policy on holidays as specified in the policy and procedure manual. Allowing for four hours.
Allowing for four hours for part-time employees as holiday pay, and eight hours for full-time employees.
I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a motion to approve the revision to the policy on holidays from Commissioner Cox, and a second from Commissioner Mallett. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries.
And I'll make sure the employees receive this revision.
Okay, thank you. We are now up to Road and Bridge, Mr. Harry Walker.
Good morning, everyone. Do you want to talk to this one?
You go ahead.
We are continuing the process of selecting engineering consultants to do the bridge design work for the 2015 grant that we received from GLO. Commissioner Mallett, Commissioner Dobianski, and I were appointed as a selection committee. We solicited requests for statements of qualifications. We received seven packets. We met, discussed those, and shortlisted two firms for interviews. The two firms we interviewed were Goodwin Laster Strong and Strand Associates. They're both very good firms, both very well-qualified. After the interviews, the committee decided to recommend or request authorization from the court, tendering negotiations with Goodwin Laster Strong to come to a financial agreement on this contract. Under the Professional Procurement Act, if we cannot reach satisfactory terms with the selected firm, then we'll move on and negotiate with the second firm.
And this is from 2015?
The 215, 2015 grant that we received, we only received the grant in August. It's taken that long for, you know, we got reimbursements back in 2015 for the actual damages. This grant is to allow us to make improvements. We're going to use it to replace a couple of bridges, County Road 201 and 202, and do some roadwork in those neighborhoods. But yes, the wheels turn slowly in Austin.
Do I hear a motion on the floor for item number eight?
I move to authorize negotiations with Goodwin Laster Strong to provide design services for the 2015 GLO disaster recovery grant.
Second.
We have a motion for item number eight to go out for negotiations. You said Goodwin Laster?
Goodwin Laster Strong.
Strong Company, engineering firm, to provide design services related to the 2015 GLO CDBG disaster recovery grant. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, Mr. Walker. You may continue with item number nine, is this to discuss, consider, and select an administration service provider to complete application and project implementation for the CDBG disaster recovery funding through the General Land Office, Community Development and Revitalization, and authorize the county judge's signatory. See attachment nine.
Just a couple areas, I can present this one.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Herrera.
Could you show me what is in attachment nine?
Resolution. Yeah, because it doesn't say anything about.
My understanding is this is for the Harvey one.
Yeah, this, this is not the resolution that goes with this agenda.
Okay.
Okay, this is for, to select an administrator for the CDBGDR disaster recovery grant for Harvey. We have not had much time, we haven't had time to look through the proposal. We just received them this week, so you guys can choose to table it, or, we only received one proposal from Grant Works. We have done business with them multiple times, we're currently doing business with them, and so I don't know how you guys feel about accepting it. So the only thing I wanted to tell you guys is about the timeline on this CDBGDR Harvey, the deadline to submit grant application is the end of January 2019. We're already in November, and so that's my only concern. You could put it on the agenda next week, or you guys may be contingent upon review from the county attorney, or see that this is a good proposal, or, or table it, whichever, and have more time to look at it. That's, that's up to you guys. I just wanted to be honest with you.
What, do we advertise for a considerable amount of time?
We did. I emailed five different companies. I know one that recently submitted for hazard mitigation, because we have several things going on at the same time. Currently, we haven't finished with hazard mitigation plan, so all these companies submitted proposals, five of them submitted proposals for the hazard mitigation plan, but there, a couple of them told me they were not able to submit for this one. It was advertised, it was put on the internet as well, and we just had them. But they're, they've been very active with this as well, and so they're, and we always get one from them.
So, Mr. Fullstein, do you have any input?
I don't.
He hasn't even looked at the proposal itself.
Okay, so you're suggesting that we bring, you submitted to the county attorney?
Yes. I only mailed it to him this morning. It was sent in my outbox, I thought it went out last night, no, it didn't. So he's only got it since this morning, and he's here, so.
Okay. So you're asking that this item be tabled?
Yes.
Okay.
I think that would be a good idea.
All right.
And we'll put it on the agenda next week, Ms. Herry.
All right. Yeah, well, we will.
I move, I move that we table it.
All right.
Item number nine.
All right, that's seconded. All of those in favor of tableing the item until next week? All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Item number 10, consideration and possible approval of a communication line on County Road 421, and authorize the county judge's signatory. See attachment number 10.
This is a communications line permit request, County Road 421.
Okay, and this is going to run parallel?
Run parallel to Link Road. Running into the knife river concrete plant site, which is currently being used by strike contractors, who's doing the Magellan Pipeline. This is just sort of their trailer complex that they set up there.
Okay, all right.
And I believe it's 2,000 feet, 2,000 feet line.
And this is going along Link Road and Industrial Park, right?
Yes.
Well, if there's no further discussion, then I'll make the motion to approve a communication line on County Road 421, and authorize the county judge's signatory.
Second. Do you want to sign today, Harry?
Yes.
So you need to authorize either all four commissioners or pick a commissioner?
Okay. I amend that to authorize Commissioner Precinct 3 as the signatory.
Second.
All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. We're now up to item number 11, consideration and possible approval of a change order for Wakefield Bridge related to the County Road 132 Bridge Replacement Project. See attachment 11.
This is some additional work that we're requesting Wakefield to do on the County Road 132 Bridge, because of some damages that occurred in the recent floods about three weeks ago. Basically, the stream there, there are two branches coming in essentially parallel to the road, and then turn and go through the bridge during the heavy rains here a few weeks ago. On one side, that parallel flow got behind the wing walls and ate out about halfway across the road. So what we'd like to do is extend those wing walls parallel to the road to cut that off from happening in the future. So Wakefield has given us a proposal for $22,098 to do that work, and we're recommending that it be approved.
So now, it's going to have 20-foot wing walls?
They're extended 20-foot section of wing wall on each side, on the upstream side of the bridge, on each side. They'll run parallel to the road to make sure water can't get behind the wing walls in the future.
And you said to extend it, so there's some already there, you just extended?
We built wing walls that come out at a 45-degree angle, but because of the angle of the stream coming in, part of that flow, when the water got high, ran behind it and started churning and eating out the road itself adjacent to the bridge.
Okay, thank you.
I move to approve the change order for Wakefield Bridge related to County Road 132 Bridge Replacement.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve the change order for Wakefield Bridge related to County Road 132 Bridge Replacement Project. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number 12, consideration and possible approval of a special road use indemnity agreement for magnolia oil and gas.
This road use agreement is for the drilling of a new well on the TMPA mine property off of County Road 190. The proposed routing for the heavy loads would come down from Highway 30 on the north end to the drill site, which is about halfway down to the new bridge that next stop is put in. We have met with them, we've evaluated the roads. They are going to provide some assistance to the county in putting that road into proper shape before they start to work. It's, fortunately, it's in pretty good shape right now, and it, it only involves County Road 190, so it is a very limited project. If everything goes according to schedule, they will be done with this work in about 60 days. So a little different operation than the pipeline and some of the other activities we had recently.
Is this in Commissioner Cox's building? Is this your area?
No. Yeah, I believe it is. Yes, 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 it is.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
I move that we approve a special road use indemnity agreement for magnolia oil and gas, and authorize the county judge's signatory. Or do you need that one signed today also?
Yes, please.
Commissioner Walker is on the second floor.
We have a motion on the floor to approve the special road use indemnity agreement for magnolia oil and gas, and Commissioner Precinct 3 to act as signatory. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're up to our Road and Bridge report presented by Mr. Walker.
It's been raining.
Yes, it has.
Things have been slow. We did have some significant damages as a result of the rains back on the 15th, 16th of October. In particular, the 132 Bridge I mentioned earlier, and County Road 162 West, we had a double-drill culvert collapsed. That had been underwater for a number of days, and as soon as the water came down, some sort of a heavy load came through there and collapsed the culverts. Just as of Tuesday morning, we reopened the road. We have replaced those culverts. There's been a challenge working down in that river bottom with the continued rain, we were to pull off several times, but that has been restored. Elsewhere, we're trying to do blading and restore some of the other damages when the weather conditions permit. It's just with this much rain, it's hard even to do blading on the roads to get to it, so we are behind. I know you're probably getting plenty of calls, we are, about road conditions. A few days of sunshine this week will help, we'll get caught up on some things. The other item I wanted to mention, there were a couple of things, the contractor, 404 and 141, has had to pull off completely due to high water. We're hoping to have them back here shortly to complete those projects. 141 also received some damage from flooding, and we have that road, that structure closed completely at this time. 404 is open, but they haven't been able to get back in there, complete some of the last items. Elsewhere, we put some of the unneeded equipment out to auction through Gov. Deals. That was very successful. We ended up bringing in a total of almost $63,000, six pieces of equipment that we auctioned off. Greenwich Crew has been busy, they're trying to repair roads and ditches also. The, beyond that, like I say, just because of the weather conditions, it's been tough to get, make a lot of progress. We are complete, or we have had to stop our paving operations for the year because of the wet weather and the cool temperatures. Couple of roads we had hoped to get chip sealed this year, they'll have to, we'll have to pick them up later in the spring when we get better conditions. And we're continuing to work with the pipeline companies. Magellan has shifted their operations from the north end of the county. They abandoned any attempt to try and go through the Nevisota River bottoms at this time. They're working down in the south end now, so they, they've shifted. Basically, they can try and come from the Waller County line up towards Highway 90 here over the winter, while conditions are that wet, and go back to the north end of their project, the way conditions are more favorable, which may not be till next summer. So things have changed there. We are also, Dave Lilly has been getting the final Hurricane Harvey reimbursement packets pushed through the system, and we think we will start to see some reimbursement checks to come out of FEMA here by the end of the year, so that's good news.
That is good news.
Any questions?
I don't have any, and we thank you for the work you've been doing. I know you've been overwhelmed doing your proves, but thank you.
It's been tough, but a little bit of sunshine, and you'll be in a lot better shape.
All right. We are now up to item number 13, from our elections administrators, Ms. Rebecca Depp, to consider and take action to certify and canvass the returns for the 2018 general election and the Justice of the Peace Precinct 3, Proposition A, the legal sale of all alcoholic beverages, including mixed beverages, no later than November 20th, 2018. Ms. Depp.
Good morning, Mr. Score, voters of Grimes County. I am here today to, the canvas for the totals for the general election that was held November the 6th, 2018. I, Rebecca Depp, election administrator, voter registrar, do hereby certify the attached cumulative report as the true and correct election results from the general election held on November the 6th, 2018 in Grimes County, Texas, under Section 87.1231 of the Texas Election Code. And I believe I've submitted the totals. We had some visuals that we had to count, it was up till yesterday, people had to come, and the term is cure for ballot, and so we did have a couple of them come, and the account changed, but not by much, just by a couple of votes. Do we have any questions?
I don't have any. Are there any questions or concerns?
That's the general. The next one is for the... For the JP. We've cut down a whole tree for this election. Okay, this one is the canvas total for the Justice of the Peace Precinct Number Three, Proposition A, being held November the sixth, twenty eighteen. I, Rebecca Depp, election administrator, voter registrar, do hereby certify the attached cumulative report as the true and correct election results from the general election held on November the sixth, twenty eighteen in Grimes County, under the section of eighty-seven point one, two, three, one of the Texas Election Code. And that one is for the... The liquor code goes by Justice of the Peace, and that was the area that some of it was still dry. And so with this vote, it made it, the voters of that area voted it in to be wet.
Okay.
And it passed. That's it, ma'am.
Do I hear any concerns or considerations? Then I make the motion that we certify and canvass the returns for the two thousand eighteen general election and the Justice of the Peace Precinct Three Proposition A, the legal sale of all alcoholic beverages, including mixed beverages, no later than November twentieth, two thousand eighteen.
Second.
All right, all of those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, Ms. Depp.
Thanks, ma'am.
We're now up to item number fourteen to discuss the Justice Center options as presented. Is this an additional one, or is this just a smaller version?
This is a small, this is the one that I sent y'all at least. The email.
Colors look a little different on this one. So with the colors looking a little different, is this a reversion? I mean, does this address any of the concerns that we received?
This, I believe, yeah, tried to shrink it down as much as possible.
Do you have an extra copy?
Yes.
Somebody else had made one, that's okay.
I guess mainly what we need to do is kind of give some direction to Architect on which direction we want to go as far as the basic design, which includes the courtrooms and any accompanying satellite type offices for the county clerk or district clerk to be able to oversee their court. And then the other one was adding the other departments that we had talked about adding originally. As you can see, the first scheme is twenty-three thousand square foot, and there's basically a range based on, you know, building materials and whatnot from two point, from seven point five million to eight point seven million for the base type structure. And the next scheme is thirty-one thousand one hundred and seventy square feet with a range of ten million to eleven point seven million. So I guess we need to, if we're gonna go through with this, I mean, go, continue with this project, we're kind of at a stopping point now with Architect to where we have to actually, you know, give them a direction on which way we want to go and start with the design process in a more detailed manner.
Okay, well, I don't know if you receive the same concerns that I did if we went with the larger square fleet of thirty-one hundred, I mean, thirty-one thousand square feet. And my concern is, did we not do an assessment of the building and the needs? Because we're still hearing from department heads about, I don't have enough windows, I don't have enough storage.
Yeah, well, I think once we, that would be part of, whichever direction we go, we're gonna, we're gonna address those issues. And it may be a plus or minus a few, you know, square feet with that. But I think for the most part, it appears that with the base one, we can, we can pay cash for, based what we have in fund balance for that building. But I guess we kind of have to do a cost analysis of, is it best to go ahead and build this fully now? Because I guess in the future, we're still probably gonna have to finance it if we want to build it in the future as well.
I just want to make one observation. I know the Plan twenty-four, one seventy-six, the plan says twenty-four, one seventy-six, and the estimate says twenty-three, one seventy-six.
Yeah, I didn't notice that. Twenty-four versus thirty, twenty-three. It's bound to be a typo somewhere, one of those.
Right.
But I believe the same principle as far as the cost is there.
Okay, and I was going somewhere when I was talking about the needs assessment, because I think that every time they redraw these plans, we're being charged.
No, we're not being charged.
We're not being charged, that's what I want to clarify.
That's why they're at the point of, you know, developing the project, and then, you know, once they actually start to put together the plans, is when they'll start charging again.
Okay, so if we chose the larger building, then those concerns would still need to be addressed as far as storage and the number of windows?
Yeah, access doors for those that have money, different, different things like that. And, you know, the office space itself, you know, individual offices versus what? I mean, a lot of that can be adjusted, and it can be fine tuned where it's not gonna be that much more space.
I guess one of my other concerns was, I don't know if, so that everybody would have the freedom to speak on this project, such as department heads, since we're hearing so much from the department head, if this should have been a workshop. I don't know.
Well, I think, like I said, right now, we need to decide if we're gonna, if we do, if we want to somehow fund the whole, the whole building itself, how we want to do that. If we want to move forward with that, then we can fine tune how much it will be more.
They're still awfully high on their square footage.
Well, I mean, I think that's just what it's gonna cost. I mean, some old data, I mean...
Three hundred and seventy-five dollars is square footage?
I've got it, well, that's the top end, the bottom end is three twenty, I believe, is square footage, so.
And one of the emails talked about the materials, what materials going in, and how that affected the price, you know, whether up or down, so that's what I'm saying.
That's the purpose of the range, I mean, you can get at the base model to the top, and that's where we could go in with the, you know, with the further design. But, you know, right now, the, you know, Architect's basically at a standstill waiting for us to tell him which direction to go. So.
Well, my other concern is the financing of this building. I mean, for me personally, I would not want to do a building unless I got public input. I don't know how anybody else feels, that's just my feelings. Because we're talking, we're talking on the larger scheme, Scheme I, I guess that's what it's called, ten million to eleven million. That's something I think the voters need to have input on. The other scheme...
Which would basically be an additional, two, two to four million, I guess. Two to three, two to three or four million additional.
Say that again?
It'd be an additional, you know, one point five to three point five million dollars.
On Scheme?
Yeah, that would cost additional for what we'd have to actually fund or finance.
Okay. And then on top of Scheme H, you're saying that this is money that we currently have? And that concerns me, because so many times we get into projects, and then you have these change orders. I know you've already compensated for some change orders.
And this, this pretty much has a contingency in the estimate itself.
Well...
And that, a lot of the change orders depend on the Architect itself and the plans that are submitted. There are gonna be a few unknowns, but as long as they're quality plans, your change order should be minimal.
The change orders that come from the contractor wanting to make changes?
Yes, depending on the plans, but if the plans are, you know, are laid out well...
Well, I know that in past projects, you get into the projects and you find, but that was a renovation, but...
There's a lot of unknowns with renovations.
So it may be totally different if you build a new construction, but is this turnkey?
Yes.
That's parking lot, that's all of that? Groundwork? Okay, and we know that with all of the storms we're having and Harvey and every, we've seen the changes in the prices. So does it...
And they're going to go nothing but up. I mean, inflation from building is estimated at least five percent a year. So, like I said, I think we've got this fund balance because, you know, we had big fat budgets in work, but I think now we're more streamlining our budgets, so we're not gonna have that type of, you know, savings, I guess, per year. We're pretty much got to the point where we're cutting fat in the budget, where we know there's no, not much that's left over like it was previously. So I guess we need to, I mean, how many more years are we gonna have out of these, these other buildings?
My only concern is with the big building, okay? If you're talking about moving all of these departments over there, you still have, what are you doing with adult probation?
I mean, that's something we need to discuss as well.
Because if adult probation then moves here, this building, you're saying, needs work. So how much more work, or how much more are we adding to our budgets by having to revamp this building?
That would probably be something we would add into that too, with the amount of renovation required.
I think that would need to be a different project for remodel on this building. I wouldn't include it in the price of the new building. I would do a separate line item in that capital projects fund, because you want to see exactly what you spent on the new building and exactly what you spent on the remodel.
But my thoughts were, if you're considering a new building, okay, what then happens to adult probation? And that's more money, okay, that has to be spent to bring adult probation back to Anderson. Whether we bring it back or whether we leave it there, we need to make some decisions on the total overall vision for the county buildings. And initially, this was gonna be a justice center and dealing with the courts. And the larger plans includes everyone, so I don't know where adult probation went, because we only said they were gonna be over in Nevisota temporarily, pretty much. So, you know, we do have to have those conversations about where do they go now, what happens there? Because that's funding too, we're gonna have to pay for it, that's something else we're gonna have to pay for, or we continue to pay where they are, but it's in the total scope of things.
Sure, absolutely.
So I don't know where we are, I mean, it's confusing to me.
The money that we're spending on repairing these buildings, I feel like can go towards paying for the money that we'd have to borrow to build a larger building, because we're spending, we're spending a tremendous amount of money on repairs right now.
We're capping our budget every year, so that, my budget runs anywhere from thirty to forty thousand a year, but that's also on seven buildings.
But you're not really eliminating buildings, pretty much.
Yeah, now, I'm coming in from the side, I'm not full functionally, I'm only hearing what we're talking about. County Clerk Building was gonna be used for Historical Committee Commission. I don't know if that still stands, I'm kind of just, that was presented to me. The courthouse can't go anywhere. The annex was, at one time, adult probation was moving in here, and some office was, were staying in here. Road and Bridge was staying in their building, nine one one. So the only ones that we, I believe that we were losing was the DA's office and my building. But in the new plans, I don't have a building there, so if you lose my building, I guess I could set up somewhere. So, no, you're only usually, you're only losing one building.
And possibly not even one building if you have nowhere to go. I mean, where are you going?
I don't know. I set up somewhere.
And we talked about, that's our hub, right, for our communications? So with the new buildings, do communications then move over there?
They should.
Right, well...
I'd have to ask Ray that question.
That what I'd have to ask, because, yeah, because now you've still got communications over here. I believe that building would still be your communications for the greater courthouse complex, if now that's over there. So I think they're gonna pick up off the sheriff's communications, I believe, but I'm not an IT guy, so.
That's a great question.
So here's, this is a significant enough decision in my mind, and I'm certainly happy to talk about it. But I think we're missing a vital piece of the puzzle in this discussion, and that is the county judge.
I wasn't expecting we'd not be here to this, ma'am.
Right. And I'm certainly sure that he will have an opinion on the direction in which we should go. And I think it's prudent for us to include him in this conversation.
Well, like I suggested earlier, maybe this should be a workshop, because this is a large enough consideration, I mean, we need to consider everything. You know, you look at all the strengths, the weaknesses, every, every aspect of this, because we still have some unknowns to be discussed. I'm not at the point where I, I'm comfortable even voting on this, you know, one way or the other, because I'm just not comfortable with it.
We weren't, we were just discussing, we weren't gonna vote on this, but just maybe I could give direction, or we, Commissioner Cox, not give direction to the Architect on, you know, to start, start the process one way or the other.
But what would he be starting?
Well, that's what I mean, if we feel that we, and like I said, I believe with Commissioner Cox, I agree with Commissioner Cox that the judge should probably, should be in on this as well today to discuss for the whole court is which direction we want to go as far as if we want to, you know, finance two to three million dollars to go ahead and get this completed, or basically pay cash for at least to get the courts, because that's, that's our biggest priority, is the courts.
Well, the thing of it is, we can't be pressured...
Oh, no.
By a design firm or any other thing until we look at the complete picture, that's the way I feel about it. I'm not gonna rush into a... I'm not going to rush into, to a, a, a commitment because an architect needs to know. So, um, at this particular point, I would suggest that you, you know, table any, is this just a discussion?
Yes, this is just a discussion.
Okay, all right. I think that it needs to be discussed in a workshop in the near future.
Well, I guess what, what, uh, focus on that workshop would, are you talking about? What we want to do with existing facilities when we do move? I mean, is it the broad, I thought that's, was kind of already discussed, but.
What? No, because things keep changing. I mean.
You know, I think we've got enough plans. I, I think.
Yeah, I don't think we need any more plans.
We don't need to see, at this point, we don't need to see any more plans.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I'm saying, is, is basically.
Half a dozen.
If we, I guess the, one of the biggest decisions, and I think the, the judge should be involved with that, is what, do we want to finance and build something? Whether, you know, I guess we, like I said, have a workshop about that. It's like, do we want to put more people in there, make it even bigger, finance the whole thing? Or do we want to at least get the courts over there and, and keep maintaining these buildings here?
Well, I'll make a suggestion then that we put, ask that the judge and his office put this on a workshop.
Okay.
At a, at a date in the near future.
Maybe like, yeah, I guess, probably not the holiday weekend, but the, or the week, or the following.
All right, well, thank you, Commissioner Mallon and Commissioner Cox. We'll move on to item number fifteen to consider and take action regarding the burn ban. I just feel like we're good. Anybody else feel the same way, that no action needs to be taken regarding the burn ban? We'll leave it as is. Item number sixteen says to receive any updates on the strategic plan. Do we have any updates? Well, that leaves only one other item to be discussed, is item number seventeen.
I move to the general.
Okay. It's been so moved that we adjourned by Commissioner Adubinsky and Commissioner Mallon. All of those in favor say aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you.